I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, February 21st, 2018. And all commissioners are present and accounted for with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who is absent and excused. And I expect maybe Vice Chair Clark and Commissioner Seachill on their way. I haven't heard anything from them. But with that, would you like me to take care of this, Bruce?
Please do.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Kevin Kirnen. Did I pronounce that correctly? Appointed Planning Commissioner. He's filling Councilmember Zorn's vacant position. And he's starting immediately tonight. Do you have any, would you like to say anything?
Well, I look forward to serving on the commission. I've been in my home since eighty-six, been in Bothell since ninety-two. So if you do the math, it was a Canyon Park annexation. So a longtime resident, raised, my wife and I raised three sons in the community and looking forward to spending some time giving something back.
Great. Well, it's really great to have you here tonight. Looking forward to your insights. Appreciate having you here. And there's nobody in the audience tonight with the exception of our Deputy Mayor, who's sitting in with us tonight. I guess she'll be joining us occasionally to just check in with us and on us. And, but thanks for joining us tonight and taking your time to do that.
And just, and just one item on there. Again, the purpose of Deputy Mayor Duer being here is just to observe primarily. It's not anything of any particular interest that she's going to have. But she may, she may have some insights that may assist us. So thank you.
Yes, yes, please. Please come forward, Deputy Mayor.
So I just wanted to say council was looking at different options for having a closer relationship with our different boards and commissions. And the one that was settled on was try out a council or liaison to each board and commission. And so truly, I'm not here to influence or anything like that. I'm just here to observe and then bring reports back to council so they know what you're doing. And occasionally, if you have questions, I can go back to council and kind of get, get the groups feeling on things and then bring it back to you.
We really appreciate having somebody at council here with us. So thanks for taking the time to do that. That's fantastic. And with that, we have some minutes to approve. Has everybody had time to review those? If so, does anybody have a motion?
I reviewed the minutes, but since I wasn't present at the meetings, I'm not certain that I should vote on them. I can certainly make a motion to approve, but I don't think I'll vote when the time comes.
Yeah, technically, it should come from one of the two commission members who were there during those hearings.
Yeah.
I was absent the September twentieth meeting, but I make a motion to approve the June twenty-first and the January twenty-fourth meeting minutes as presented.
And I'll make a motion to approve the September minutes, which I believe I was at.
Yes.
I'll take that as a second as well. All those in favor of approval of all the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And just a little thank you. It's nice, that, that was great because we're actually caught up on minutes now. Like that's like, we're all the way caught up. For a while, we were several months behind. And I was like, is, I mean, what did we discuss? You know, what did we decide? So it's really nice. I really appreciate Leslie getting those, getting those done for us.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a tough effort, but they actually got us to the last meeting.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Yeah, it's awesome. And let's see, there is a new business tonight. There's a planning commission letter to the city manager regarding long-range planning, staffing, resources. And at the, was it, I guess it was the last meeting, right, Bruce? That we, we, we had, we chose several people to put together a, a letter? And I think Dave, you were taking the lead on it, correct?
Yes.
And I don't know if Commissioners Hampton and Clark had much input on it, but I just, I read the letter. It's excellent. I don't really have, I, I don't have any changes to it. And we can kind of look at it a little bit. But yeah, you want to kind of like, go ahead and take it away on what you thought?
Yeah, unfortunately, I got it to them just a couple of days before the deadline. And, and so I didn't get comments, but it was probably my, my lack of getting it to them enough time. But it, I believe it captures what we talked about as far as the points made at the meeting. But we can talk about the, and we can decide to approve it and move on with it or table it until the next meeting. I mean, it's either choice.
Okay. I think we can go ahead and take care of it tonight. It would be good to see if anybody has any comments on it. In essence, I'm not going to read through the whole letter, but I think we as a planning commission, we were looking at our, what we had on the docket moving forward and long-range planning staff, Bruce and Dave, and their commitments were, you know, Bruce has a lot of time spent towards the Canyon Park, which he'll be addressing later this evening, and Dave Boyd with U-Dub Bothell. And so we had some other things on the docket later this year and maybe even next year that we weren't sure if maybe we were going to be able to get to. And with all of the, with, you know, Bothell growing as fast as it is, all the changes going on, it would be nice, we felt as a commission, it'd be nice if we had more long-range staff resources to be able to help us out and maybe go through some of those more, some more of those items. And I like, I don't know, did you have any, you have any comments on it, Patrick?
No, I thought it summarized our conversation last, last meeting. And just trying to stress kind of David's point from our previous meeting that Bothell's changing quickly due to the influx from Seattle and everything around it. We want to do everything we can to stay in front of it rather than be reactive. And we understand that the budget's extremely tight and adding full-time employees is not an easy, easy thing to fill. But if there's one area that we should be looking at, hopefully this is one that can kind of make sense for the city.
Yeah, I know it's, the points made in the letter, but you know, the, probably the, the most important thing for me is just in this next year period, if, you know, if we don't have a big economic downturn and growth continues, there's just a lot of things that it would be nice to get through some of these big projects. Canyon Park, Citywide, Land, there's a bunch of projects that they're just not getting enough time because of all the other duties that they have to counsel and other projects they're working on. And, and the concern is that if some of these things are great from a planning perspective, if we don't get to them for one to two to three years, and then it takes a little bit to implement them, that, you know, the train is kind of left to station from a development standpoint and planning standpoint. I think we realized in the tree retention discussion and the clustering subdivision discussion, you know, they, they gave us the map that said how many of the parcels are left that could actually benefit from it. And it's a, you know, there's not that many on a relative basis because of kind of big parcels left that you can make kind of meaningful use of those two different initiatives that, you know, it's a limited subset of properties left that could, you know, developers could plan for that and implement it. And similarly, growth-wise, if we could, you know, accelerate things a little bit on the planning side, I think that would be a worthwhile investment at this time for the city.
And, and then Kevin, if you have any thoughts on it, let me know. I'm, feel free to jump in.
Yes, well, I'm looking at the closing paragraph and it is footnoted. Not sure to how to end it. Should we ask for a response or look forward to a response to this request? Is one thought. And second thought is, should the commission offer to speak to the full council if they want more information?
Yeah, I just didn't know, that, that was something to talk about tonight. What's our, what's our, exactly our next steps and, and what's the procedure for it? So.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, let's see, those are, those are interesting ideas for, for closing it. I almost feel like, I almost feel like we could just finish it with thank you for consideration of our proposal. I think the rest of it's pretty self-explanatory, but I don't know. And so you were.
I did just add, because the three, the three of us, Brandon, Eric and I did, that we would be, because we were tasked with, you know, coming up with this letter, because we're the ones that spoke to it the most. If that makes sense for us, obviously the letter's coming from you, but if this, you know, that, that we could, I'd be happy to be. So that's, that's kind of how I left it.
Okay. And then Kevin, your, your idea was a little bit, yours was again?
I'm struggling how to phrase it diplomatically, but really asking for response. The ending, it's consideration, you know, we look forward to your response to this request or look forward to hearing. It seems like, seems a little open. And another, I'm a retired thirty-year bureaucrat, so I may slip into that mode. Is there a committee? You say there's a committee. Is there actually a committee or?
We were appointed to like a standing committee just because for open records, meet, open meeting records and that act that we can't, the three of us had to kind of work on it. Otherwise, we couldn't, I mean, we couldn't have a larger group work on it. So we kind of appointed us at that meeting to, to work on it.
I understand that process, so.
Patrick, Kevin, you also know?
I'm okay with it as is. I can, I guess I understand the, trying to close it with some sort of action so that it gets reviewed. But I, I don't think we necessarily need a, a response. We're putting it out there. I think it's sort of known that this issue along with many other items in the city could use, you know, either extra FTEs or extra attention. So I don't know that we're looking for a conversation back and forth, but definitely would be open to it if either the council or city manager wants to have a discussion with the subcommittee.
I'm also okay with it as, as written. And I really appreciate, you know, taking the time out to do it. It's an excellent letter. I think it does summarize. And there's one other thing that I didn't mention the first time because I didn't want to just read the whole letter over the microphone here. But maybe the, one of the more important things that I didn't mention is, is the information transfer to anybody, to future planning staff. I mean, Bruce and Dave have been with the city for a long time. They know a lot about the City of Bothell. It, it's, it's kind of a good way to transfer some of that information and to kind of bring somebody up to speed. And that person, you know, would have a wealth of information at their hands. So I think that could be valuable. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve it, approve this letter as it is? Is there, or is there any other comments on, any other, okay. I think it's okay to approve it tonight. I mean, do you guys feel that that's reasonable? Because I, I mean, I, I think it's reasonable, yeah.
I think it's early in the year, probably the budget's set for the year. But, you know, it's worth, I'd be in favor. I just want to make a motion to approve it and have it signed and delivered to.
Okay, great.
City manager. Thanks.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes, so.
So I guess, so from a, from a, kind of closing the loop from our standpoint, so we'll have to come up with some way for, for David to sign the letter for you. And if anybody has a particularly pretty version of this, or we can, or we can do that. I can do that.
I can term the word version.
Okay, great.
Do you have a printer now?
Oh, yeah.
All right, that works. Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. Take out the footnote.
Great, well, thanks again, Dave, for putting that letter together. And there is no public hearing tonight. And with that, I guess we'll just kind of jump into the study session. We are joined here tonight by Bruce Blackburn, City of Bothell. And so we have a couple of things miscellaneous and miscellaneous housekeeping, potential code amendments, and then Part B briefing on Canyon Park, Regional Growth Center Visioning Project. And with that, take it away, Bruce.
Hey, thank you, David. Well, here's the situation. Every year, we gather a lot of these code amendments that, you know, either have some technical flaw or have some kind of an inconsistency with other provision. And we try and have those updated so we remove those kind of things from our, from our regulations, primarily because these things have a tendency to really cause confusion. And it's not so much confusion on staff, but it's confusion for applicants and citizens. They'll read a section and say, wait, it says this. And they'll go to another section, wait, it says this. So we're trying to address those things. Tonight, we've identified ten of those potential miscellaneous code amendments for the commission to kind of take a look at. And a lot of them are one-word changes. And so they're very, very minor. But a couple of them have a little bit more depth to them. And I guess what I would identify is that the one that has a little more depth to it is the one about mobile home parks, manufactured home parks. And essentially what that one is, that involves a situation where we have some mobile home parks that actually have fee simple lots. There's actually a physical lot line established. Those are easier to measure setbacks from. But it's the rental pads where some kind of undefined area is yours and some undefined area is his that gives us the real problem. So what we've done is we've gone into that section of the regulations and tried to come up with a methodology based upon a code interpretation that the director had to issue a number of years ago. That said, okay, here's how we should apply these provisions when we don't have those physical lines in the ground. But we just basically based it upon what is happening basically within the park. So that's the one that's probably the most involved. And this, again, pretty fairly technical, but it, it gets a little bit of help. One of the others I think I'll identify that I think you'd be kind of interested in is that one of the provisions of a conditional use permit is that you'll get a conditional use permit approval from the hearing examiner. And that's basically a public hearing. The thing about it is that there are certain modifications that begin to that conditional use permit. One of the limitations on the modification is there's no ability to expand that conditional use permit. So let's say you have a religious institution that says, hey, we want to add five feet to this portion of our building. It's going to be another, you know, two hundred square feet. Have to go through the full condition use permit process. There's no way for staff to administratively approve, say, yeah, that's so minor, nobody will notice it. We should have that ability as a minor administrative approval process that can happen. So that's basically what you have been for. We're identifying probably a ten percent maximum change that could be approved underneath that more expeditious administrative process. The other one I think I would mention to you is our personal wireless services or wireless communications facilities, as they're called. One of the things that we have is a holdover from a long time ago when the first, when this was, first became a real issue and the Federal Communications Commission said, everybody will have to allow for cell coverage, cellphone coverage. And it was new stuff back then. You have to have these provisions and these facilities within your community. One of the things the City of Bothell did is kind of a way to, you know, address some of the concerns that people identified at that time was, okay, well, we'll put a notice board whenever we put one of these notice, one of these facilities in. And we'll put that notice board up and then they have to have that up. And it's there and then all of a sudden, the facility goes in and people say, why is this big huge notice board right in front of this facility here? And the real tragedy about this is that, let's say somebody takes a look at it and says, oh, hey, I have a real concern about radio frequency, you know, radiation, which there used to be a lot, but, or some other concern about that type of facility to occur there. I want to comment or have some kind of influence over this, this permit. The citizens don't have any influence over it because it's so regulated by the federal government. The City of Bothell can only control certain aesthetic provisions, and those are really well addressed within our current regulations. So it really has become one of those things where the more notice boards you get, the less effective they become. And we don't want notice boards everywhere. Another thing was we're also anticipating a new provision underneath the wireless communications facilities called small cells. And these are going to be small cell sites that are going to go all over the place, literally to basically fill in some of the gaps in coverage. And putting a notice board up for every single one of those things would be really funny because you'd have, you know, half a dozen along a street, stretch of roadway. So that's one of the other items that I want to identify. I think at this point, I'll, I'll let you guys kind of look at that and ask me any questions you may have on these. And we can kind of go a little bit more in detail what we did, of course, as we did our traditional note box before the section to kind of explain what the basis for those changes were. But if somebody has questions or some, some different language that you'd like to propose, please let me know.
Great. I guess we'll start, if anybody has any general questions for Bruce, go ahead and ask him now. What I would like to do is just kind of go through each of all ten of these and just one by one. And at that time, people can ask any questions or ask any clarifications. But if there's like a general, just overall question for Bruce, if anybody has one?
That's right.
So, I shouldn't touch it. So coming from this commission, these will go before the council and then go through that process. Has the council seen this yet or is this staff?
No, in fact, one of the things about it is that the council's actually initiated many of these things. These are old docket items that, you know, you guys kind of talked about this letter. Well, these are the kind of things that have a tendency to kind of sit around for a long time till we finally get them up and, in the situation. And this was a perfect time to do it because I have a little bit of a gap and a couple of other duties I'm working on right now. So essentially what this is, this is a study session. And this is a chance for the commission in a more relaxed atmosphere to kind of talk about some of these code amendments. And then what we'll do is we'll have a public hearing. And the public hearing will be where we will invite members of the public to make, you know, statements or proposal or provide input on these, these code amendments. You'll hold that public hearing, you'll close that public hearing. The next step is that goes to the city council. Where the city council will hold its own public hearing and approve or adopt an ordinance.
But as, excuse me, but as far as the origin of these changes, they've been identified by staff or council or?
Yeah, in fact, these things are identified by numbers, usually as staff, because we are the ones who spend all those days with that code and say, hey, boy, there's this thing that is not contrary. Well, here's, here's another example. We have one of these provisions that basically adopts a Washington Advisory Code Provision, I'm sorry, Washington Administration of Code Provision about schools. Well, it's just something that was forgotten, I mean, or some kind of an error. So basically, the idea is we live these things and we see this and say, and we go to the council in our docket and say, hey, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of these things to do. And the council says, yeah, you got to take those miscellaneous code amendments and fix those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. All right, so I don't see any other general questions for Bruce, but thanks for putting this together, Bruce. This is a lot of work to put this documentation together. And let's just go ahead and start with the, the first item. That's the determination of consistency. And if anybody has any questions on it, just feel free to speak up.
Well, I think what I'll do is I'll just speak real quickly about what this is about.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
What happens in this regulation is, this is a provision about consistency when we have different types of reviews that come in with a development application. The first thing we do is determine whether it is complete or not. That is its own process. Then we do consistency review. Is it consistent with our regulations? Is the height the right size? Has it got the setbacks that are appropriate? Things like, like that. The problem with this section, the way it was set up, is it talks about consistency. And then at the end start, all of a sudden, it talks about completeness. And that has caused a lot of concerns with athletes. They say, wait, I'm going to have to go through another completeness review. The city has to comply with what's called the Regulatory Reform Act. We only get one shot at these kind of things. And so all of a sudden, this would have a tendency to people say, oh, you're taking another shot at the completeness? You can't do that. So we want to make it clear that when we do ask for additional information, it's not a completeness provision. It's essentially something we're going to do to be able to do the consistency review. And we kind of have a little bit definite nomenclature here just to make it clear that people don't think that there's another completion review coming in for it. So that's basically what this is about.
And so just on Part Four there, it says within fourteen calendar days, that part. Can you kind of explain the significance of that, the fourteen days?
Fourteen days, that's based upon state law. The Regulatory Reform Act requires that the city perform certain types of activities within certain timeframes.
Okay.
And here's an example. The city has to complete its completeness review in twenty, within twenty-eight days of receiving an application. So there's a bunch of those kind of, those timeframes within the regulations that we have followed basically upon state law.
Do you want to, do you want to change the title in C just to make it clear up there? Because I think you have the, it, it kind of runs together there. It has, review additional information is necessary to complete project permit application consistency review.
You know, we think that's still okay.
Okay.
Because what we're looking at is that, here, here is a great example. Let's say we have a wetland report and it's got a bunch of information, but they haven't really covered some really key feature. Perhaps there's a salmon stream or something like that. This is our chance to ask for additional information based upon that report. Say, hey, Luke, you really need to understand what the impacts of that salmon stream are and this, what this project has upon that. And that's where we ask for additional information, not completeness review, but additional information.
I guess I'm confused because I, I didn't really digest the whole section. I'm not sure what's around it. I thought C coming down here was what needs to happen before you go in Four, before you go on to, just to commence consistency. And from an order of process, do you, do you do completeness first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So what you're thinking is.
It's just strange that this.
You're thinking that maybe it should be up that way.
It's strange structurally that the completeness, it's language in Four is in this overall section of consistency review. That's the.
Yeah, and, and that's where it's always been. But I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
But that's why we're making the change, right?
Well, yes and no. Yes, from the standpoint that we want to basically fix that little completeness confusion. No, from the standpoint that, you know, I, I would have to be real careful how I get into this because all this was set up very clearly underneath the provision of that Regulatory Reform Act.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm okay taking a look at that because I think it's worthy of us taking, reviewing that and make sure that we are consistent and following a better flow. I could see how number Four really could be number One.
That either needs to be one, yeah, we don't even get into these other things unless.
You're correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. So let me see if I can, let me see if I can move that up.
And is there a cross-reference to a completeness section that you can make? That you've done completeness pursuant to this section? Somewhere else in the country?
Shoot, let me see, let me remember. Do we have one there?
Or make a note for yourself.
I think we do have a cross-reference.
Does that help people to know where they need to go?
Yeah, I'm trying to think if we can, all right, let me see about that. Let me, let me take a look at that. Again, one of the things we're, we're trying to avoid is we're trying to avoid somebody thinking, oh, we're going to go through another completeness review. And if I make a cross-reference, well, let me, let me, I'll take a look at that.
So you're thinking about moving Four up to One or instead of, I mean, kind of reordering?
Well, yeah, Four up to One, if, if it makes sense to keep it all in the same section just, because, you know, completeness is a gating item to really getting into the, and what they don't want to have is restart the completeness. Because if you've gotten into consistency, that assumes you've, you've done completeness, right?
Yep.
And so this completeness thing is kind of mixed into this consistency section. And if I was reading this, this would still confuse me of where it is.
So I think what I.
Rather than having like, you go, shall go through completeness. And, and if you have a cross-reference, if this goes up to One and then it says, and you've done completeness pursuant to this section, it lets people know, you know, we're now, this is all about consistency and not about completeness at all.
Right, yes. So I, I'd like that approach. I'm going to check with our legal guys, but I think that they'll say, yeah, that's okay. I think there's enough leeway here to do that.
I'm okay with that. So in doing that change, does that change, does that change anything else with?
It's more of, it's, it's more of, it's not changing the language. It's, it's just making it clearer because they're trying to clarify it and.
Great.
So basically what that does is it, it'll be right after the heading that says, okay, additional information. And then we can go into, okay, if we do happen to have a need to do that within that fourteen-day prime frame, and it, and it's a little closer up there. Okay, that's good. I like that.
Great.
I'm, I'm not sure. So the first paragraph suspends the timeline.
Yes, yes.
So an application came in and it is, there are consistency issues. So it pauses the process. That's what One says. Two says the applicant has ninety days to fix this, address this issue. If they don't do it, they're out. If they do do it, then the city has fourteen days to address what they've done. So I'm not troubled by the, the timeline. I, I do see some logic to how it does. You know, right off, right off the bat, okay, there's a problem, stop the clock. And then everything else kicks in. So I, I see some logic to it.
You know, I think this is one that I'll, I'll go back to our development review folks and identify, okay, what is working for you now? They did not identify change in the order as an issue. They identified the language that was set up. So I, I am very comfortable in talking to them about that.
And, you know, having done some development work, that's one of the concerns. Okay, where's, what happens to my clock? You know, you, you're on these timelines where you have to do certain things by a certain time,[1771.51] You know, you you're on these timelines where you have to do certain things by a certain time, yet you're telling me there's more information. Okay, I'm relieved. I've got, you know, we're freezing the process. So it's, there's value to it. I, you know, I wouldn't argue vehemently, but I do see that there is some basis for it.
And freezing the clock is important.
Okay.
Okay.
It it would be helpful one to come back just to see the other section, if you can, like
Yeah, we can
Breathe it, because it's it's a little bit in the vacuum. I just, and I, and I didn't have time to digest this, but and that, this may fall logically, but again, it it just, it's, it seems to me a strange place to talk about commencing consistency review. So, but maybe, maybe that's, that's where it should be.
Okay. But it seems, Bruce, you've got what you need to kind of go
I do, thank you.
All right, great.
That's good.
Excellent. Thanks, guys. I'll move to part two. Responsibility for providing public notice, remove references to former requirement for a certificate of mailing.
Yeah, a few years ago, the city got rid of the certificate of mailing requirement for applicants. Primarily because it was so confusing and so hard for us to get that going. And what the applicants were identifying, hey, I went into the post office at some other location. I said, hey, I need a certificate of of mailing and they said, we've got all kinds of blank stares. So it was decided what the to do here was be to remove that requirement and just retire the affidavit of of mailing. And that's so far been sufficient.
Okay, and then
Well, I remember we were part of that process that came to the commission first. And so this is just consistency within the code because it's one spot that we didn't catch.
It's just a place we forgot to take that out.
Do you have a template affidavit?
Why don't you, why don't you grab the other one?
Yeah.
There you go. And yes, we do, we have a template for that affidavit.
Okay, thank you.
As well as an affidavit for posting and all those other things.
Good, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, and but, yeah, okay, so that was already, yeah, I see your notes from two thousand sixteen. I kind of preferred the way it was previously, but that's no longer, you know, doesn't hear there, there. Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts with concerns to to this? Okay. Okay. All right.
The next one is one of those again where we changed the regulation in one section and missed it in another section. And basically what happened is the city said, look, from now on, a household is six people, not eight. And we changed it in five places and missed one. And so this would basically correct that miss, if you would.
Remember that discussion? Let everybody take a couple moments to look over the language, the new red underlines and strikeouts. And just, so on this table A, I just, and I guess it's, I don't know, I guess it's other tables provided for reference. And so if I'm looking at households of more than six, like partway down the table, it says households number, part nine on page four. So is it, nothing's filled in because it's not, it's not a valid zoning, right? I mean, you can't do it. I mean, there's no, there's no zoning classification? Because households are more than
That's interesting. Why did that not, I don't think it, I just don't think it populated in there.
Okay.
Huh.
So, and it's talking about, I don't know.
But you're absolutely right. If it's not, if it's not, if it's not allowed use, it's not supposed to be there, so.
Well, you said in single fam, or
Single family, yes.
So.
And there are some very specific circumstances where the director is allowed to allow, allowed the ability to approve more than six people within a house based upon the Fair Housing Act. But for some reason, the the that didn't populate in here. That's really interesting.
And these are all designations of, what about multifamily? Are these, okay.
Hmm. That's really interesting. See, the idea behind it is there's supposed to be a P where it's allowed.
Exactly.
The footnote is supposed to identify what the provisions are that would allow that.
Right.
And that's basically what number B nine does. And it basically identifies, okay, in those specific situations, you can see we call up the RCW and we've kind of a little bit, done a little bit of description of what those, those special circumstances are that we can allow houses of greater than six people. But it's supposed, there's supposed to be some permitted in that table.
Okay.
I'll look for those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, on page seven, the last Oh. Section of this provision. Except as provided in subsection B nine, could you briefly state what that, those exceptions are?
Domestic violence shelters, where there has been a reasonable accommodation through the Federal Housing Act. And those are some very specific provisions that we are required to provide. And those are the two primarily ones we see.
All right, thank you. I just see an exception and wonder.
Yeah, yes. Oh, let's see, it cut off right there, didn't it?
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, not that it's pertinent to this discussion of changing or making consistent within our code, but that stemmed from a citizen's kind of complaint or initiative that drove this change?
The, yes, essentially what happened is that we had, I think it was two individuals who came forward and said, you know, we have a situation where we do have one of these households that has eight unrelated people. And they identified a number of concerns with that. And the council looked at that and said, yeah, you're, you're bringing forward a reasonable thing. We did a little bit of analysis and we did some investigation. We found that quite a few jurisdictions do limit it to six. Unrelated, not related, but unrelated. That's, that's the rookie there. So, yeah, we actually did change it from the eight to the six.
Do you know if there's been any change within the city or has this been brought up where someone's been in violation?
Well, essentially, here's how a lot of these things work is the fact that if you have somebody who has a a house that they actually do have more than the six required. And somebody files a complaint, it's a code enforcement action, and that's where this gets implemented. And our code enforcement officer, I I haven't spoken with her lately, but she does see a few of these every once in a while. Well, she'll have some number that's, that's beyond the, that's allowed. Very difficult to prove. Well, her just visiting for the day or something like that. But that's, that is a code enforcement action that the city can take now.
Okay, well, thanks for clarifying that, Bruce. I guess we'll move on to the fourth item, development standards, revised language regarding mobile manufactured home park setbacks and change in locations for parks with rental pads.
Yeah, and this one got more involved than I think we really wanted it to be. So we had to set up the different scenarios where you had fee simple lots and where you did not have fee simple lots. One of the things that's unfortunate is that our, our development review staff actually hasn't had a chance to review this section yet. And I was kind of waiting for it. Come on, come on, get it. They just couldn't quite get to it. So I think that we've got, I've I've captured correctly what their identification was. But if you have any questions here, this would be a great time, because I can make changes before we actually go through a full review process for that. But essentially what it is, is that, and C is the one that really is the, the one that is kind of definitively identifies what it is. Basically, if the rear and side and rear yard setback cannot be ascertained, the location shall be dealt by the ten-foot minimum clearance distance between mobile home or manufactured homes. And then also the other thing is that a lot of times when you have these driveways, okay, well, there's not really a twenty-five foot ride right or something like that. It's just got a roadway down through the middle. So the idea was to measure that from the center line of that roadway was the best way to get that kind of separation dis- distance we needed. So anyway, that's basically what we came up with. But but if you've got some questions on this one, please let me know, because I'll make changes.
How, and how did you, I think you spoke on this at the very beginning, how did this kind of come about again? Did you say, why did this come up?
You bet. Well, here's the situation. We have, we have right around seventeen hundred mobile manufactured homes within the city of Othel. Some of those parks have got fee simple lots, just like any other single-family residence, where you actually have a defined lot line. Some of them do not. Some of them have just got, okay, well, this is your space. And it's about ten feet by twelve feet by eighty feet. Sometimes the spaces are ten feet, sometimes they're twelve feet, sometimes they're fifteen feet. The issue is, okay, we have a one that's coming out, taking out an old one, I'm gonna put a new one in. How do I place it upon that space? And so essentially what the situation is, there's a separation distance between mobile homes that has to be, mobile manufactured homes that has to be maintained. And so the idea is that now we're just gonna basically, okay, it has to be ten feet from this one and ten feet from this one. Wherever you have it within there is okay.
Perfect.
But we didn't have a code on that, so that's what we're doing here.
Feel free to jump in if anybody has any thoughts on it.
One of the reasons for these setbacks is typically access for emergency vehicles.
Emergency service personnel, yes, usually not, not necessarily vehicles, yes.
Service personnel.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you touched base with those folks on this?
Yeah, they really want that ten feet.
Yeah, I would imagine they do.
It kind of makes sense, right? Because if you think about it, if it's, it is a residential detached building, right? And so everywhere else in the code, it's five feet from setback at least, right, on the sides? So that makes ten. So it seems, seems reasonable.
Oh, and the second companion to this is on the next page, page number ten. And this was just one of those pieces of language that probably had a good intent. But what happened is it says allowed or change in the location of any mobile home. Well, let's, let's say they move it two feet this way and there's meeting their setbacks. I'm sorry, you can't change the location. So we're just taking that provision out so that they basically follow the setback provisions and and they can place it anywhere within that space they so desire.
Well, this is great. Thanks for bringing this forward, because I know a lot of these mobile homes are, are being, you know, updated and replaced. So it's probably really important to have these
Yeah, and but, but having said that, we actually do have a lot of them have been in place for, you know, let's see, forty-some odd years, maybe even fifty years. And and we don't want to have a situation where it's difficult for folks to take those old ones out and put new ones, which are built on much better standards in terms of
Exactly. Anybody else have any thoughts on this one? Need more time? All right, let's move along then to part five. And this is what Bruce referenced earlier. Wireless communication facilities permit required. Type of action and expiration, remove notice board requirement for the wireless communications facilities, equipment installations. And you kind of, you talked about this, not at length, but but a bit, last time I think we met, or maybe it was a couple other times ago.
A couple a little while ago, yes.
Yeah, and and to me, this this does seem like one that's because I really appreciate the notice boards. I think it's a, a good way of letting people know, I, in in general. But in in this case, it, I, I don't agree with the notice boards. And I'll be thankful if we choose to remove this requirement. Because I think it takes away from the other notice boards around town that provide actually things that people can be interested in and actually they can have an input on.
Meaningful notice.
Meaningful, yes. Oh, right, right.
The next one, number six, on page eleven and twelve.
Sorry, I just have one comment. Yeah. Is it possible, these, these obviously are logged somewhere at the city? If someone wanted to find out where all of these, you know,
Oh, they want to know where the location of the
Because it says, no public notice shall be required for such permits. I understand no public notice, but is there any way that we can just have that information available here or online so that people who want to know where all of these are going can know?
Well, every single one of these still requires a permit. So they still have to get a permit and that's tracked in our tracking system. In theory, what you could do is you say, look, I want to see all the WCF permits you've issued in the last six years and we give you that list. If if that's what you're after, or you're looking for locations.
You guys, you don't plot these on your maps, no?
We do not plot these on our maps, no. And the reason for that is, again, that's because when we do the GIS exercise and we put the, okay, here's a new subdivision, here's a new conditional use permit, here's a new tall building or something like that. The idea is that, oh, boy, we wanted that. If we were to put all these locations, WCFs, it'd just be populating that map completely. Everybody's saying, wait, what is all these dots here? So it would be one of those things where we probably over, over, over-inform people of what was going on, but
But if I came in and wanted to know, I mean, I I know that there's some, I lived up on West Hill and there's some at the corner. There's telephone pole at the corner of eighty-eighth and two hundred and third there, and there's a couple on that telephone pole. But if I wanted to know where they are around me, you couldn't really know, because they're so small and hidden now?
Well, well, we could find out, and that's the key, yeah. We could actually find out where those are located and say, look, I want to know what the one on the corner of whatever happens and get approximate address and we can send you those permits.
So somebody could say, I live here, tell me which, what's, what's around me and you could, you could do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, because again, what's permitted is placed into our permit tracking software. It's there forever. Yes, it is there.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to, ask a question now.
This next one is is tougher. And the reason it's tougher is because there's a special provision underneath the, the provision, the regulations that allow a single-family residential to go from the standard thirty-foot height up to thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-foot height up to thirty-five feet in very special situations. And essentially what those situations are, are spelled out on page number twelve. And it's B and it lists all those kind of situations where you can and cannot do these things. One of the things that has occurred here and it's, it caused a lot of problems is that there was a time when applicants come into it and say, well, I can just set this building at thirty-five feet because I'm fifty feet from the nearest single-family residential structure. That's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be the lot is at least fifty feet from that area. So that basically means, and the concept there was that you have a subdivision. The exterior boundary lots, the ones that face your existing development, comply with the thirty feet. It's only when you get interior to that that you go up to the fifty, thirty-five foot level. And that was the intent here. The issue is it didn't specifically say lots, even though we have interpreted it to say lots. And so what was happening is that people saying, oh, well, I'm fifty feet, I'm more than fifty feet from that exterior boundary, so I can have a thirty-five foot height. No, it has to be the full lot. And again, that was the idea behind having that first row of lots comply with a thirty feet. So that's basically where this is all about. This is a regulations that was passed, I can't remember when it was passed, it was a while ago. But it has given, given some problem. We want to make sure it's clear that that first row of lots is thirty feet.
So this clarifies it to how you've been interpreting it, which is, which obviously, which means you can't have a thirty-five foot in that ring around the edge.
The first lot, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Except, and this is where this gets even more confusing. There are some circumstances where you can go to the thirty-five foot, even if you are within that fifty foot. And those are the items that are listed A through H. And it basically involves, okay, if you're willing to put in a landscape buffer, if you get permission, things like that.
But we're not opening up that list.
No, not so far.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on this? Well, this will be, this will be a good change for sure. I'm sure this will clarify.
Yeah, we, that's, that's important to do.
I'm okay with the language there. Looks like everybody else is too. All right.
Number seven is another one where we did some changes in our regulations for hard surfaces. We established a very specific percentage within each of our zoning boundaries or designations. And essentially what we had is that, that's great, but except for panhandle lots. Because they will have a panhandle of, you know, a hundred and twenty feet or more. And all of a sudden, they're putting their little fourteen-foot driveway. And by the time they get through the lot, they have a very small amount of space to put their house on. Because again, the hard surface is a fixed number, it's forty-five percent. So essentially what this would do is this would say, okay, that part of the panhandle that you need to get to your house, we aren't going to count against the hard surface coverage provisions. And that's basically what this does.
Do the drainage regulations Do the drainage regulations accommodate the runoff from that panhandle?
Yeah, and in fact, one of the things that's kinda interesting is ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the panhandle driveway actually drains to the, the, the street system, drainage system. And again, the way that our current surface water design provisions require is that you have to assume the impervious surface, hard surface coverage on those lots, forty-five percent or more. And you have to make, could they accommodate that within the provision? So that's one of the, one of the really new and different thing, uh, elements of the surface water regulations that we didn't do in the past.
So it would assume the forty-five percent of the lot plus the panhandle?
Yes, and you know, one of the things that's interesting about engineers, and we have maybe one or two in this room, is that we actually have an ability that there's a bunch of additional storage added capacity into those factor of safety things that you have, so usually, even if you go much, much higher than that, there's plenty of space for the, uh, storage. Before you release, sorry.
There, and I see that, you know, building and hard surface coverage shall be measured as you just exclude the, the, the entire handle, no matter how wide it is.
Right, right.
And that's, that is all that needs to be, there, there's no other calculations that need to be done where we exclude the panhandle?
No, uh, there's actually another section of the code that I didn't include here that actually talks about setbacks and how you'd apply setbacks. And we don't apply setbacks to the panhandle either, basically you wait until you get to the, the bulk of lot and then you do that, so. Yeah, and so the idea is that this, this gets, sets up the same kind of a, a system.
So Bruce, on, so when you say panhandle lots, you're not talking about easements per se, you're, it, it, it's actually owned by the, the owner?
Yes, a panhandle lot is basically one of those lots that has that long skinny access drive, if you would. If you don't have that, and it's that you serve it by an easement, then there's not a preissue. 'Cause it's gonna be easement on the other lot, basically an easement is okay. Somebody on this piece of property has given you a, you know, approval to use their piece of property for your purposes. And so the idea behind it is, okay, well, yeah, it count against the other guy, not yours, and that's basically what this does.
How many, so what percentage of, I mean, what pers- how many properties in Bothell, what percentage of properties do you think, that's actually not a good question. Are there a lot of these panhandle lots out there?
Are there a lot, uh, there are quite a few, um, one of the things that our new design standards, in fact, our clustering helps a little bit with this too, is that because of the way pieces of property were configured, and particularly in the ninety-six center zone, we were getting quite a few panhandle lots. Just because it was a way to get back to that back property with the, you know, to get your subdivision up to the numbers. Um, so we're hoping the clustering, in fact, we've got one that actually did, he actually didn't have to do the big long panhandle. But we do have a few of these panhandle lots around there, and some of the people didn't wanna do the easement approach that you've identified.
Okay, our next door neighbor has a panhandle lot, so I'm aware of at least one.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, just, you know, um, I, I guess, I, I don't know, yeah, I, I don't, does anybody else have any thoughts on this one? I mean, I don't know, does this encourage, I mean, I guess lots are, can be subdivided in the future. Uh, is there a potential problem with, with changing this and allowing this in the code for future developments that will increase the impervious cover? Like a, a consequence that we didn't really see coming with this change?
Um, I don't think so, and the reason I don't think so is because panhandle lots are really inefficient. Basically, you're getting up a lot of land for that lot. The idea is you have a whole bunch of those panhandles, all of a sudden you say, wait, at twenty feet by a hundred and twenty, it only took me four of these panhandles and all of a sudden I have another lot. So you wanna be as a, the, the, the developer who's trying to maximize his yield is trying to be as efficient as he can, and he's trying not to have very many of these panhandle lots.
Just, just thinking about like, like situations where there might be like a critical area or something like that, and there's not, you know, the only place to put a house maybe is on the back part of the property far from the street, and so I, I, in, times like that, I just don't feel like we should be crediting or giving.
Panhandle, though. If it's, panhandle is just that access, it's a little sliver to get to, it's like, it looks like an easement.
Right, but are you?
Critical area that's on that would not create the panhandle.
No, but if, if you had a big lot with, and, and it took a long way to get back there, and you have critical areas on the part that's not the panhandle.
Oh, got it.
I don't know, I just, um, I guess, I, I guess I'm okay with this, I just wanna make sure that we're not en- encouraging a, a lot more impervious cover down the road, I know there's a lot of, you know, lots out there that are, that are just historically panhandle lots, but I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, and when I say there's quite a few, it's not like hundreds, it's, it's, it's dozens. And so I think the idea is that, okay, I don't know how I would do that count, I'd have to come up with a way to get the GIS guys, or, or mapping people to do it, but um, the idea is that there are not that many. Interestingly enough, probably the most panhandles you see are gonna be in the larger lot areas. You know, maybe R forty thousand, or some of the areas that have a bunch of existing lots. Uh, not a lot of the new developments have it again, because it's an inefficient way to do a layout of a, a subdivision.
And sorry not to belabor this, but I'm going to, I'm sorry. Um, so if it is like R forty thousand, there's a good example of why I don't think we should be giving, um, uh, an exception to it because they're already R forty thousand, and they already have what, uh, is it fifty percent, what is, what it?
Uh, actually, R forty thousand is limited to a thirty percent cover.
Thirty, okay, so, if you have the driveway, I still feel like that allows for a lot of, uh, impervious cover on the regular, okay.
But what that does is that that means that when you actually get to the place where you can have a development, if you have a really long panhandle, let's say five or six hundred feet, that's an, that's an extraordinary number, but it could be, you may have virtually zero hard surface coverage left over by the time you get back there. And, you know, it, it kinda depends on your, your, your perspective, but the idea behind it is that, you know, you want to allow them to have some type of a use for their piece of property, it's single-family. And, you know, it's supposed to have some type of a coverage, we don't wanna have a situation where, well, yeah, except that we'll give you the permit, but you're gonna build a two thousand square foot footprint on this big piece of property, even less. Um, so that's kinda the idea, is to try and be reasonable here with how we, uh, apply these provisions.
Okay. Does anybody else have any thoughts on it? 'Cause I just, wh- wh- I, I think I'm, I'm in the minority here, I just, before I have more information on this, I, I don't, I don't think I would be, I don't think I'd be in favor of this particular change, but, 'cause I guess I don't, well, I, I, I'm a little under- I don't understand why this is coming about now, like, there's been, there's, why we're allowing for this now, whereas, is it because ch- changes are becoming more, the regulations are becoming such that, you know, that they're becoming a lot, a lot more hard to build on properties? Or I don't really understand.
Well, and actually, and, and that's a really good question, and I think I can address it this way. What happened is that the hard surface coverage provision is pretty new, I mean, it's only been in effect for about a year and a half.
That's true.
And whenever we get one of these new provisions applied, all of a sudden, oh, wait, things we hadn't thought about, and hadn't been able to predict, and hadn't been able to, to gaze into the future and say, well, this might be a problem. Those kind of items come up, and in this situation, what we've had, we've had a number of, of properties that had to have panhandle lots. And, oh, I'm gonna put a house on my, you know, the, the lot that I gave my daughter twenty years ago or something like that. Well, let's see, here's your impervious surface coverage limitation, and it's like, well, she has a family of four, or whatever it happens to be. That's a pretty small hard surface scape, what am I gonna do now? And so basically, when we get a new regulation like this, we get these different sc- scenarios coming in and say, oh, there should be a way that we can allow some relief to that provision.
Does anybody else have any things for the clarification? Okay. So move on to, uh, part eight, minor modifications to approve conditional use permits include an increase of square footage as a minor conditional use permit modification.
Right, and this is the one where I kinda mentioned before, where there was no ability at all to expand it, even a minor amount. So what we've identified that as long as you don't expand it more than ten percent, which is a pretty small amount, you can use the minor modification process to go through and get an administrative approval. If you go beyond ten percent, you gotta go back to the hearing examiner, get the, uh, PUD modified, I'm sorry, the CUP modified in that manner.
And, and that would be total in aggregate?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Go in and get, you know, one modification now, reset the bar, have another one later?
Uh, well, you could, if you desire that you wanna go through that process every time, 'cause but basically the idea is, okay, I could do this ten percent, and this ten percent, and this ten percent, and this ten percent. That's gonna take you a long time concerning how long it takes to get through that process.
But it would still be a minor modification.
It wouldn't be a minor modification, right, right.
That concerns me a little bit.
So you think that somebody would?
Doesn't, the language in three, doesn't that, uh, uh, cover that instance, 'cause it's ten percent of both established by the approved CUP?
That's right.
'Cause you're sinking, you're sinking that, and I would suggest adding that to six. 'Cause six isn't, I think you could use six to go back and get these incremental, yeah, I want a minor, I'm gonna add ten percent, I'm gonna add another minor. Um, without kind of like.
Going through a full hearing process to get a reset.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, so essentially when the PUD, I'm sorry, I keep saying PUD, my, my, the CUP, basically there will be a identity height number, square footage for that facility. And then you would have that ten percent increase to that number. And, and David is correct, he said, yeah, you couldn't go beyond that, 'cause you've already done that, so.
But the, the CUP we're referring to is the initial approved CUP. It doesn't become, okay, I got my ten percent, now this is the CUP.
No.
It doesn't reset the bar, okay, that was.
And, and, and part of that is because they are, they're a different level of process. One is, a CUP requires a hearing examiner decision. And that's gonna be very explicitly spelled out is what is being approved there. And that is the overarching conditional use permit that's allowed there.
If I'm well familiar with that process.
Yep, there you go, good.
Bruce, just, wh- where did you come up with the ten? Just, I'm, is it some, some other jurisdictions have done, or?
Yeah, essentially what we did is we did a little bit of analysis, okay, what are, what is the, no, 'cause, you, like you said, ten, fifteen, twenty, what did it happen to be? And, and we basically identified ten percent is what a lot of their jurisdiction use. And it seems like it's reasonable, 'cause a ten percent is a, is a fairly small minor, if you would, uh, change. And that seemed to fit the, the criteria there.
So could we add to six some language so that it, it, um, the point Kevin's making about, um, kind of syncing it to the approved CUP that doesn't have that qualifying language? And it's been a little while since I've looked at a traffic study, but I, I know there's kind of variation, would you say the, how would, how would you hook into the numbers that are in the traffic study that then become?
I think, I think, sorry, I think tying it back to the original CUP is a good idea.
Having similar language, you know, more than, more than ten percent.
Of that established through the CUP.
But again, traffic volumes are, I know, I know there's ranges and, there's peak hours, so those become, should you say the maximum volumes established in the?
Yeah, a volume is basically an average daily trip.
Okay, so there's, it reduces down to a si- single number?
Yes, yeah, so that, that helps us a little bit, it's not the PM peak or something like that, it's a, it's an average daily trip.
I just wanna make sure that this, that, because we're now establishing that we know exactly what we're measuring ten percent.
No, I, I like the, I like adding that as established by the original, or the, uh, what is the language up here, the approved CUP.
I think you'll have to rework a little bit, 'cause like, the sentence structure is a little bit different, but.
Yes, I know. Yeah, that's a good point. Number nine is one of those there, oh, wait, there's no more OP in that lower Norway, or, sorry, Lower Maywood, just special district, so. Pull it out of there. And then we thought we'd also add a little bit of clarification of what, you know, the existing lots, you know, okay, in existence as of, and basically reference to chapter twelve fourteen, which has got the provisions according to dimensional standards. Um, and, uh, then also make sure it's clear that it does have to follow these provisions, which is the front yard, side yard, and rear yard setback provisions within that area. Basically what this, the reason this came about is that within that area, we have a lot of really small lots, you know, five or six thousand square feet. And if you had an R eighty-four hundred designation, a fifteen-foot rear yard, five and ten side yards are really tough to meet, 'cause you get a very tiny, tiny house. And the other one is particularly the R four thousand, R twenty, which requires a twenty-five foot rear yard setback. So all those are why, why those were all set up at a little bit, little, little smaller standard, 'cause again, they're very, very small lots.
Okay.
And on eight hundred square feet, interior heated living area, that was basically something that the, uh, um, building folks said, hey, look, if you call it interior heated, we don't head into this discussion about, well, it's my garage, it's not heated, it's like you live there, and that, it was a minor thing, but they wanted basically to include that.
I see, so, interesting. So the eight hundred, it's weird, it is weird to me to put a minimum, uh, uh, house size on it. I mean, should be, is it, I mean, shouldn't somebody be able to build a small house as, I, I mean, I guess, I don't know. May, or is, is the thinking of, uh, is the thinking of staff that, you know, they're gonna have other structures and they're not gonna have adequate place to put?
Well, actually, this is a standard that was done in nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay.
That was one of the first things I worked on when I came to the city of Paul.
Is he, okay.
And.
I see, right, 'cause that, that is just, um, that's.
At that time, what it was, is they said, you know what?
I'm sorry.
If you're gonna build a house here, we want to have a certain minimum size, and, and eight hundred square feet was identified as the number that seemed to have the most comfort, and it fit with the small lots and things like that, so.
Okay, okay, and plus, that's, that's not in the red, so I shouldn't even be discussing that.
Well, yeah, but still, that's okay, you know, you can identify that as an issue or something like that. We do have some leeway. Oh, and finally, on page number sixteen, that is an old, old, old drawing, I'm gonna redo that, if that's okay with you folks. All right, thank you. Funny when you see things you did, worked on a long time ago. Yeah, stayed, stayed out at one time, it's not anymore. Um, and final, the final one is that, again, within our SEPA categorical exemptions, we list all the things in the Washington Administrative Code, except for schools. Why that was missing, who knows, but it should be there.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think with, yeah, without bringing close to the first part of the study session, now we'll move on to Canyon Park.
Fun stuff, this is fun stuff here. This is enjoyable. I actually have a little presentation, but you can follow along in your packet. All right, hold on.
If any commissioners need to get up and get a drink of water or anything, just keep going, but I think I'm gonna go in a little bit.
It's a good idea.
Now that we have the technology, I can hear you as I go outside.
We, we can call a break if you so desire.
Okay, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll just go take a five-minute break, great, and we'll resume back at around seven fourteen.
Awesome, thank you.
And most of folks did consider themselves Canyon Park residents or employees, which was a very successful outreach. Because that was what we were really keying on, people who actually live and use that area day to day. This is kind of an example of the public comment tool. And this is basically kind of a rundown over here on the right that shows, okay, they had the choice to pick a topic of category in transportation, quality of life. And this basically just shows you kind of how people decided to divvy up their comments and how they set it up. And they put a little symbol where they wanted to have that discussion. We got some really awesome comments. In fact, when you read through them, you know, we have a couple that are kind of humorous, but we had some really valuable input from us. One of the things that I like to identify that was kind of a little bit of a surprise is that we had four or five comments on a community center in this area. Somebody wanted something to have where we could come and do it, act, serve as a community. And that was really interesting to us because we said, oh, well, that's kind of us. That was something we weren't anticipating. We thought people would say, yeah, we want this restaurant, or we want this coffee shop, or we want this type of business. But the community center was something that we were a little bit surprised at. So that was really fun to see those comments we got. There are a lot of things we have learned through this process, and I can't go into all the details. But one of the keys is this is an incredibly successful business park. We have a number of really big companies that are here. We have Seattle Genetics, we have Phillips, we have CMC, it used to be IQOS, we have Romac, Leviton, Amgen, you name it, we've got some of the biggies of the biggies. And they have got, many of these guys have got over a thousand employees within their facility. And it's not just, you know, okay, big companies. We have manufacturing jobs here. In fact, one of the things that this area has identified is as an innovation partnership zone for biomedical devices. And when we started pulling up these numbers and finding that stuff, the fact that in that regional growth center, the Canyon Park area, we've got forty-seven hundred employees dedicated to manufacturing, that was huge. And the reason I say it's huge is for me, I grew up in a small town, that's twice as many people as in my entire town. So it just gives you an idea that there's a really great synergy of businesses going on in here. But then you look at the rest of it, and there's a lot of really interesting companies here. And they do all kinds of really fascinating things. We thought it was kind of various, and there was a few people who did for agriculture, forestry, fishing, and hunting. It was like, what is that about? But who knows? One of the things that was really fun is we started learning what these companies did. And when we were having the stakeholders, I'd go up to one of these folks and say, well, what do you guys do? And they'd go into this sometimes kind of scientific exploration. I had no idea what they're talking about. But the idea is that, you know, we're talking biopharmaceuticals, you're talking about radio frequency, you're talking about cargo tracking. One company tracks cargo that you ship worldwide. Another one does cell immunotherapy. I can't even say those words, but basically some really awesome things. One of the things I found particularly exciting was that Juno Therapeutics is a company that basically takes blood from people around the country, and they modify them to fight cancer. And then they send it back, and they put it back in the person, and that blood they take from that person fights the cancer. It's just amazing what they're doing out here.
Do we know, I know Juno was acquired in the last month or two or three months for like nine billion or something like.
Right.
Do you know whether they're staying around?
Well, in fact, one of the things that we're doing is now is that we have, it's interesting because Seattle Genetics actually bought, it wasn't Celgene, they bought somebody, and then Celgene bought Juno. What we just had a conversation with Juno about three weeks ago. They believe that the piece of property they have, which is basically west of five-two-seven, is so valuable that they are definitely gonna, they really want to expand it. And it's just, this location has been working great for them because it's, you know, their stuff can come twenty-four hours a day. And then they have their people work it, and they have actually committed to doing some type of an expansion to that site. So we don't think they're gonna go anywhere anytime soon. Seattle Genetics is the same thing. They've identified, look, this is a wonderful place. We love being here. Good stuff. So we don't think we're gonna see a lot of changes. Except for this item that I'm gonna talk a little bit about, transportation. One of the things that we wanted to understand was where people come to when they come to work to Canyon Park, and where they go home at night when they go home. And basically what this does is this is kind of a graphic representation of kind of density. Basically, the bigger and darker, the circle, that's more people go to that location from that area. And it was just absolutely fascinating, but when you look at this, these, this information, that look at the concentration of folks that are kind of in South Snohomish County that come here. Now, that's not to say everybody comes from that area, because when you break it down even further, we have fifty-four percent of the employees coming within less than ten miles, which is great. But interestingly enough, eleven percent are coming from Seattle. So it's just kind of interesting when you start breaking down some of these numbers. But this figure here, this fifty-five percent less than ten miles, is really important because it really helps with transit. This means transit can work if we can get it to function correctly. And that's why some of the transportation improvements that are on the horizon are really critical here. And as we started getting into this, we said, okay, what is it that is gonna come here for transportation wise in the next, you know, few years? And one of the things that we've got that's really a benefit is we have new bus rapid transit. Basically, that is a dedicated bus in a lane that takes you, and they basically don't stop at every corner. They basically keep going. They have very specific areas where they go. Of course, a couple of them, one's Community Transit has Swift Two, and that's basically gonna be along the five-two-seven corridor. And of course, Community, uh, Sound Transit is gonna construct bus rapid transit up and down the Interstate four-oh-five corridor and along this five-two-two as well. So there's a lot of things that are coming in. One of the others that has a lot of promise is that the express toll lanes or the pay lanes, if you would, that the Washington State Department of Transportation is gonna be installing. All those things are gonna help commute times improve, particularly the transit. And this is just kind of a representation of what the Swift Green Line, Swift Two will be. And basically what it is, is it will be running from the Boeing in Everett down to Canyon Park in Bothell. So you can get on that facility and go up and down this corridor really rapidly. The other one is, of course, Sound Transit number three with their bus rapid system that even connects even further, goes up and down the four-oh-five corridor, all the way to Burien, all the way to Linwood Transit Center. A lot of really awesome features that we're gonna be able to get onto first bar as bus goes. Now, this is the ultimate planned Sound Transit system through twenty-twenty, twenty-forty-one. Of course, you can see we don't have the light rail here, but we do have bus rapid transit. And that's basically the system that's gonna have to service us. But one of the things that's kind of interesting as you look at this map is that all the interconnections that are gonna be available to us in the future. And I know it's gonna take a lot of years to get there, and that's some of the issue. But at least you won't have to drive your car to go to work if you can get that second or that last mile done. But that's another topic that we can talk a lot of time about. One of the really interesting things is that, of course, I had identified the express toll lanes. Washington State Department of Transportation is currently designing a new off-ramp. And basically what this would be is that this is very similar to what's in Bellevue on Northeast Sixth Street, where you kind of come up from the bus, from the express toll lanes, and then you can access directly into the park. This is a very important key project. Because what'll happen is that you can get in the toll lanes, come up here, and come straight into the park. The other one is that this will become a really important transportation mechanism here, the park and ride lot, because the transit agencies are gonna use this as a way to come in and go. And they're gonna, again, have that same ability to go immediately onto the express toll lanes. So this is a really important project. And again, they aren't, they don't have money to pay for the project, but it is central to this whole transportation improvement that we're looking at for this area. So what was the vision for the Canyon Park area that we identified through the courses part? First of all, this has got to be an economic driver. This has got to serve as a regional business hub for life sciences and biomedical industries. That is what it is, that is what it does best, and that's what we want to establish it is to be, to be maintained. The other is that we do want it to be an urban center. And we want it to be a place where you can have innovation as well as growth. The other one is that it needs to be multifaceted. We need to have it as a dynamic neighborhood that has a mixture of housing, office, retail, and public spaces. One of the things that we think is a real feature is the connection to the natural environment. We think we have the ability to do some really awesome things by making those inroads to the North Creek and some of those things to make that a feature that people can really enjoy. And of course, finally, it needs to be a transportation hub. We need to really work with our transportation partners to assure that those improvements occur at a timely manner, and they actually get built. Now, this results in some land use zones and some land use opportunity zones and some business park zones. And this is a map to try and get to that first concept of what we want to do. And essentially what this map, this does a couple of things. It identifies places where mixed use has got a lot of sense. Okay, we have the traditional retail offices and maybe residential above. It also identifies areas that should remain as a business park, where you have the core used to be business. And what we do is we've kind of been going back and forth a little bit on some of this stuff. And we believe this, of course, is North Creek, this is two-twentieth right here, comes in, run right through there. And we think that this is gonna be one of the primary areas right next to Interstate four-oh-five and five-two-seven as it runs through here. Of course, this is gonna be main business park zone where you have Phillips and Juno. But we've also got this kind of this secondary mixed use opportunity zone. Again, one of the things we have to do, we have to make sure we meet our capacity numbers. And we don't want to have a situation where we don't have the ability to, hey, look, yeah, we're still meeting our capacity because if we don't get that correct, then we have all kinds of issues from the standpoint of citywide provisions. So this is kind of the first cut at what looks to be the most sense for this area. Finally, we've identified some kind of key activity nodes. And basically, these are areas where it really makes a lot of sense to have something interesting there. And you can see some of the arrows that kind of show some of these nodes that kind of come along for, sorry, the Bothell Everett Highway through two-twentieth and between and through the business park areas. As well as, of course, these letters identify a specific type of use. And basically, the idea is, okay, this is an area that makes a lot of sense for passive or active or something like that. And so this is basically all within the provisions. But one of the features I do want to identify is that because transportation is so important, and getting people out of the business park into the neighborhoods, we may be looking at some other means of access in and out for this area. That's always a tough thing to talk about. And the consultant felt strong enough about this that they wanted to put those on the map. And we said, yeah, it makes a lot of sense to talk about that. But this is kind of the end game that we've got through the vision process. Well, the idea behind it, they actually haven't identified them. They're just kind of putting big maps. L is on the map saying, okay, this is an area to look at, this is an area to look at, and it might be one of them, it may be none of them. And one of the things that we have the advantage of here is that we don't necessarily, as a vision process, we don't actually have to say, okay, we gotta design this thing or engineer it. It's just, okay, this is an area that makes some sense. And it's, you know, it's something that we're gonna have to get into, really into this, in the second, in the next phase we get into. But, and you know, it's just a matter of just having that discussion because, again, we've got ten thousand, maybe even fifteen thousand employees here. They've gotta be able to get out into the neighborhoods where they live. And of course, part of this, we came up with some urban design concepts. This is something that the planning commission is particularly pretty well aware of. And, you know, it's pretty, pretty standard stuff. Wide sidewalks, connections back and forth, you know, better transportation. You know, relatively mid-rise type buildings where you have a certain use on the bottom, retail and those kind of activities. And you put some residential above. And basically, one of the features that the architectural company, MBBJ, identified is that they came out here and they absolutely loved North Creek. They thought it was an incredibly gorgeous feature. And they want to come up with a way that where you can access and have the ability to enjoy it visually without actually getting to it. And the idea is, okay, let's, you know, here's an existing bridge. Okay, let's make, put a decent sidewalk across that bridge. Let's put some nice trees down here. Let's get some people who can look down onto this feature. So that's kind of the concepts that they've come up with. And these are, these are pretty normal things that you have. And again, this is again, kind of looking at how you could make this a much more palatable experience from a pedestrian standpoint and a bike standpoint. Those are all really key features. And again, you know, it could be the bottom floor, maybe the new home of Juno, and the tougher floors are residential where some of their employees could work. So that's basically what we've got right now. We are almost done with this thing. We have our last stakeholders meeting coming up here this week. And I'm, would be willing to ask entertaining questions. Thanks.
I have a long list, I'll just go quickly through them. Our population targets, are those numbers still current? It seems like they're the same numbers we were looking at maybe two, three years ago, as far as what we need to hit, as far as Snohomish County growth.
Yes, remember, our population growth targets are based upon a twenty-year timeframe. So those targets are good until year twenty thirty-five, until they get changed by an outside influence. In fact, Pigeon Sound Regional Council is looking at some of the Vision twenty fifty plan now. And they may have some changes in store for us as we go into it. I don't want, I don't want to get into that too much because it's really pretty early, but we may be looking at some different targets.
Okay, let me rephrase it. Is our delta, has it stayed on track with what we were projecting? Or due to the growth in Snohomish County, do we have less anticipated need in this development in order to hit that?
Okay, good question. Basically, the way we set this, we set this up as a capacity. What is our capacity? Not necessarily what our growth rate is, but our capacity is. What you identify is very true. Our growth rate has been really high. But we're getting to our capacity number. Basically, the capacity number for the entire city is about sixty-one thousand people in population. And we're at forty-four-eight right now or something like that. So the idea is that we are getting close to that number, our capacity number, which is sixty-one thousand people. Not necessarily, but the growth may get there quickly. So we may be, get our capacity sooner than we might anticipate.
Okay. When we talked about this before, we talked, we kind of described it as a north city center, and then we have downtown Bothell as a south King County city center. So tying into the transportation discussion, has there been any talk about like a local shuttle bus to connect the population growth we have downtown to the new commercial mixed use, you know, accessories that we're gonna be adding in this?
Well, and one of the things that was kind of unfortunate, I kind of focused this on Canyon Park, but we actually have a lot of discussion about the bus rapid transit along five-two-two as well. And it, basically, the idea is that eventually the green line will come actually to the University of Washington Bothell campus. So there's a lot more connections here than you might think about. We're actually gonna have a much improved transit system, bus rapid transit. One of the challenges has always been, okay, what do you do for that last mile or last quarter mile in particular? Interestingly enough, Seattle Genetics actually has an internal shuttle that they bring people from their parking lot right up to their facility on the hill because they're up on the hillside. So those are a whole bunch of the type of strategies we're gonna have to come up with and to fill in any of the gaps we have. But yeah, I kind of was a little bit remiss because I kind of didn't talk about the five-two-two Bothell bus rapid transit, which is also part of the Sound Transit's three provisions.
Okay, can you pull up the slide where it shows the different zones? It talks about remaining business park and... Yeah, I think that, yeah, that one, or, there you go. What's the likelihood? So we have our growth targets. When we looked at this several years ago, it seems like we were looking at the whole entire park. Not that we didn't realize that the business elements would remain, but we were kind of just looking at, there'd be some development throughout. Now we have a smaller, I guess, change in our footprint of what's gonna be in the Canyon Park area. What's the likelihood that some of these stay as they are? So I'm talking specifically like the south side of four-oh-five where you have PCC, and that development's already built out. What's the likelihood that that turns over with the ability to go multifamily or go mixed use?
Well, interestingly enough, what'll happen here is that we have our capacity, then we have our natural market activity. And sometimes natural market activity happens faster than you think, sometimes it happens slower than you think. But one of the things that is kind of interesting is that we, our consultant was looking at this WashDOT improvement on this connection here. And one of the things that we want to do, I think it shows up better in this one, you can see that little bit of a a little bit of a provision. The idea is to try and have that come across four-oh-five, so we have access from both directions. That's gonna really make this area here worth a lot of ability. Now, when we had our stakeholder, the owner's representative for the retail, oh, R O I C, I can't remember what their exact destination is. They actually are very intrigued by this whole possibility. Now, they have a very, again, they're all very successful at what they're doing now. There's not a real need to immediately change. But these are all things that add into their equation. So they say, okay, let's say we do have one of those facilities that is vacant for a while, and we get approached by somebody who's really interested in the residential development or something like that. Where they're gonna come in and say, well, what are the possibilities of getting this off-ramp constructed? Well, it's not really good right now, but eventually it might happen. Boom, you get this redevelopment occurring with their infrastructure improvements. So I guess maybe how I'll rephrase it, and I'm kind of going around in a lot of circles with you. But basically, the idea is that we do know that this will have an impact on the capacity number that we need to meet. The challenge will be crafting this in a way that we get that capacity number so that we don't have a deficit within Snohomish County. One of those is increased building heights. Right now, we have a cap of sixty-five feet for residential. We may make that larger, higher. So those are all some of the strategies that we're gonna get into in a lot more detail as we get in. The idea behind this was just to identify the landscape, the area that made the most sense for those changes, and that's basically where this is coming to. One of them, and again, let's not forget, we don't want to do something that affects negatively the wonderful environment we have with the businesses out there. So the idea is that they like the idea of being somewhat protected. Okay, I know that I'm gonna have a business park. I know if I come in for an expansion, you're gonna say, yeah, build it more because it's more manufacturing or light industrial, whatever they happen to have. That had some comfort to them. But they're also very excited about the potential of having these mixed juices because one of the items they identified is that we just don't have any amenities. Our poor guys try and go to, our guys and gals try and go to lunch, and they have to drive up and down Bothell Everett Highway instead of just walking down the hill and getting their lunch. So those are all things that are kind of coming into play that we want to continue to have this conversation with those folks. But you're right, we are gonna have to tailor this as we go into the second phase to make sure we meet our capacity numbers.
Okay, you touched on one of my other questions was the, the height limits in the area. You kind of mentioned one of the opportunities is the natural environment, and it's kind of a double-edged sword. So we have lots of streams and wetlands within this space. Development obviously adds to the hard surface, which there's quite a bit of due to, you know, large facilities. Is T D R or some sort of bonus density plan potentially in the offing still? Or is, I know no one likes that word, but I'm the only one, so I'm gonna bring it up over and over again.
Transfer development rights.
Yes, is that any?
It's probably gonna be something that we will discuss and look at in the future. It does have some potential. One of the issues with T D R, and this is just, you know, one of the, one of the challenges that we have, is that we have to pick an area that's gonna receive that additional development, if you would. So that's always something that's this hard to do, and you, okay, this is an area that could have more additional development. This area is awesome for that. And we did a study a number of years ago that said, this is a great location for it, and it's just a matter of setting it up. Setting it up is gonna be tough because it takes a lot of staff time and effort. But the idea is that that will have to be part of the mix. Okay, are we gonna do T D R here, yes or no?
Okay. I guess my last, last note is just a comment. So transportation is obviously an obstacle. Based on the surveys that you got, that was the most commented on.
Yes.
Item. I don't think anywhere within Bothell we have a landmark solution for transportation. It's gonna be a problem just in our region as a whole. I just like that we have the proximity to four-oh-five and to major thoroughfares that while they're crowded, we don't really have anywhere else in our city that has this opportunity to kind of get to a freeway quickly.
Well, in fact, you know, that is something that's kind of unique about this area because it's a direct access ramp is a really big feature, particularly from the express toll lanes. And that allows your bus rapid transit, it allows your transit, it allows the people who decide they want to pay the money to get into that toll lane, to get in and out here quicker. It really is a really important project that we want to continue to encourage Washington DOT to get built, not just designed, but built. And as part of the four-oh-five corridor provision. One of the things I think that was really interesting when we first started this process was how engaged the other transportation partners are becoming. We're having regular meetings with WashDOT now. We're having regular meetings with Sound Transit. We're having regular meetings with Community Transit. This is like wonderful, because all of a sudden we say, well, you're gonna do this, what do you need for us to do? In fact, a really good example is Snohomish County has been working with Community Transit on this, the, you know, basically the Maltby Road, Philbert Road, and it goes up and it goes across, and it basically goes over to the west to Linwood. There's one bridge that is too narrow and not strong enough to carry Community Transit buses. And Snohomish County is working on getting that bridge replaced. So this kind of synergy, this kind of partnership stuff is really encouraging. And I'm really pleased about the fact that, that through this process, we've joined that group.
Great, yeah, thanks for your presentation and answering all my questions, but also reaching out to the community and all the stakeholders over the last several months to really kind of get a baked idea of what's desired in that area.
It's been really a fun project to work on. We've learned, and one of the things is, it was almost a blank slate. And I didn't have any idea how many employees were out there. I didn't have any idea what the businesses did. I shouldn't say I didn't. I didn't have the detailed knowledge about these businesses. Now I do, and it's really exciting.
Hi, a couple of questions. So Public Works has a facility in this area, don't they?
They do.
Have you worked with them to see what their long-term needs are to be sure that they?
Every week.
There, okay, good. I hope that was the answer, but often that's the tail end.
Yeah, we actually, I mentioned transportation partners. We've been going to all these meetings with Public Works folks as well.
Okay. The park and ride, not so much for bringing people in, but that's a significant park and ride. And I don't think anybody is surprised that park and ride capacity in Bothell is extremely overtaxed.
Beyond, yeah, beyond demand, yes.
Have you looked at the possibility for expanding that, or has Community Transit looked at that?
That, that's actually one of the things that we're working with Washington State Department of Transportation and Sound Transit about. What's happening, it's interesting about that little, that little transit stop, if you would, in that location right now is because what they're doing is that the actual parking lot's got about three-hundred-and-forty stalls or something like that. They are getting about twenty-two-hundred boardings a day at that facility. So you know what, that means it's starting to act like a transit center, not a park and ride, true park and ride. But there's no doubt about the fact that having an expansion to that park and ride lot is, would be a wonderful thing to do.
Yeah, it's full every morning.
Yeah, absolutely. But the idea behind it is that we think that, we think that with some of the improvements of the transit, we might have the ability to not need as big, you know, have a thousand-stall facility. But certainly a bigger facility that would be just wonderful to have.
Well, again, looking at this planning, you're bringing people in and what kind of development is coming in. That park and ride is really getting people out, and that need is going to continue to be there. And as Bothell continues to grow, that need will increase. So I wouldn't want us to look just at the expansion on that area and constrain the ability to meet that other need.
Right. In fact, you know, one of the things that's kind of interesting about this, and I didn't touch upon this in my presentation, is that the roadways in that business park are private. They're not public right-of-ways. They're private only, except the only thing that's public is the park and ride lot. That is actually owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation. So they have the ability to do something with that park and ride lot independent of what happens with the Canyon Park Business Center. So those are all really interesting things, and I know that WashDOT has been very encouraging for us to talk about the need for expanding that, that park and ride facility. It's just a matter of finding the money.
And on this, the other map with the transportation? Yeah, that one. So I'm seeing the regional growth center boundary is south of the sub-area boundary. That effect, the effect of that is it excludes the Fred Meyer parcel?
Isn't that interesting?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then there's the dashed line. What does that mean?
Well, here's what we're looking at here, and this is something that we haven't gone in long. Is that there may be an idea, in fact, we're working with Snohomish County on this, is to expand the regional growth center to include this area. Right now, Snohomish County has this designated as an urban center.
Yes.
And so the whole concept there is, well, boy, they're so close to each other. Does it make sense just to take away this line and go this? And Snohomish County, our initial discussion with them is they said, hey, yeah, let's sit down and talk about this some more. And so we've been starting to have that discussion. And of course, one of the things is... And of course, one of the things that's really fascinating about when you do this stuff is that, and I've, I've been lucky enough to be here long enough that when this line was set, that was a pretty firm line because there really wasn't much above here except for a feed store. Since then, we've got Fred Meyer, we've got the little, um, uh, plaza right here. We've got a couple of other improvements. We've got all this information, you know, the Panera Bread, the Red Robin, the Sears appliance store that have come in subsequent to establishing that line. So now, if you were to do it today, you're like, well, wh- why is this line here? Shouldn't it be here? So that's one of the things that's kinda fun about when you do land use planning, you have the, you know, you can either tell it's a good thing or a bad thing about the rapid growth we're having, but things change quickly.
And how much process is it to, uh, change that?
Well, actually, what'll happen is that, um, as we go through this process, we've been talking with a couple of folks at P- Pre-Sound Regional Council. They have staff members that are, and, and they encourage all communities to work on their regional growth centers. And in fact, one of the things that they've, they've come, uh, with, uh, well, we've come away from their discussions is they say, we're excited that you're doing this opportunity. You're taking this, this time to really engage and look at this area and come up with a really awesome plan, if you would, a subarray plan that will make this a better functioning, if you would, um, regional growth center. So, uh, we actually have had some discussions. Interestingly enough, this is kind of big for a regional growth center. Most growth centers are a little bit smaller and, you know, more like about five or six hundred acres. This one is seven hundred and thirty-five, but about two hundred and fifty of those are curriculars and curricular buffers. So the idea behind it is that it may be, you know, covering a large area, but effectively the net area is much smaller.
And, and that north access question is going to be huge. Two twenty-eighth gets a lot of pressure because the south access is one of the, you know, you can get, there are basically two ways in and out of there.
That's it.
You're looking at expanding, although the ramp, the direct access ramp will add a third. But still, you're looking at significant growth. I think just for a safety aspect, I think you'll need to address that. And boy, will that be a battle.
Well, and, you know, and that's one of the things that's, that's kinda tough when we start these visioning processes. We say, okay, here's something we need to talk about. We need to have this discussion. We need to lay, look, there's gotta be another way to get people to go north. Cause remember the, the chart that shows where people are? Oh, sorry, went too far. Guess where they're going? They're going north. So enhancing that is something that really needs to happen. And again, I keep coming back to this, but we got five thousand manufacturing jobs there. I mean, that's, that's just huge. I mean, uh, well, anyway. But so the idea behind is that we do need to come up with a better way to move people north and south here. And, um, and none of these decisions are easy anymore.
Thank you.
You bet.
I just have one question. I think is, is in that area, uh, the, the regional growth area, or re- regional growth center, what's the current capacity? I mean, thinking about sewer water, just infrastructure to, to have that much population come in resident, because the standards kinda go up as people are there full time. Does that investment happen by the city? Who, who picks up the tab of? And what needs to be done to kind of encourage that?
If you go out there today and you start driving around along, uh, you know, two twentieth and twentieth avenue, you're gonna say, wait, how come there's this Flagler guy telling me I can't go? There's a huge metro sewer trunk line going in. Sanitary sewer is covered. Uh, the Snohomish County planning, uh, sorry, Public Utility District, um, has a facility up here. They just recently expanded it to accept more electricity because basically their customers up here, the guys with, you know, the making all these, I said, we need more electricity. And Snohomish County PUD said, we can do that. So we are in pretty good shape from a utility standpoint. Um, what'll happen, of course, is that it'll just be a matter of whether we can fit everything in within the footprint we got. But yeah, we've got really good infrastructure waiting.
Bruce, great presentation. I know this is a thing that you're gonna work on daily, so, and you're gonna continue to work on daily, so this is a, it's really cool to be ta- talk to somebody who knows so much about it. Um, I had a couple, couple of small comments. I don't wanna get too off track, but, um, so one of the general comments for people who are talking about Country Village, which is outside of that area and a small town character. And real quick, can you real, like, Country Village, can you tell us briefly about the status of it? Is it, is it, has it gone through and the development?
The, uh, the, the permit for the western part has been in place and I think it's been approved.
Okay.
The application for the eastern part by the Bothell River Highway has just come in.
Okay.
A little while ago. I think we're still in the comment period or it's getting close to being right now.
Okay, so people still have a chance to comment on that, okay.
Yes, yes, they do.
And then, so I know the small town charac- it, that, it's not, maybe, that's not what we're going after here. We're it's, it's, that, that's gonna be, that'll be tough to pull off, but, or do you have some, yeah?
Well, actually, it's interesting you say that because when we had these stakeholder meetings, we actually talked the, to the, um, the business owners. I mean, Seattle Genetics, Juneau Phillips says, hey, what do your people want to see? What would they want to live? Almost universally, they said, we have a lot of millennials. They're used to an urban style of living. They look at a suburban style of living and say, oh, well, yeah, but that's not what I'm used to. I would rather have an urban style of living. So it's fascinating when you get these different perceptions depending upon what their, what their own personal history has been. And these are all people who are, you know, PhDs and masters in biochemical engineering and stuff like that. So they're kinda used to that urban stuff. So it really is different how you perceive those things and
Right.
Um, uh, but one of the things that we wanna do, in fact, this will be something that we'll do, kinda like what happened in downtown, we're gonna craft some really good design standards. So we come up with an appearance that works for this area. And that's gonna be something we're gonna do really heavy into the second phase of this where we, okay, here's the urban design concept. Yeah, we got it. Okay, a little taller buildings, some, you know, these things, wider sidewalks, but what are the buildings gonna look like?
That's great.
So that, that's, that's, that's an important question.
And just, and a, a little plug on the design standards, um, I've always, um, I've always wanted Bothell to produce more actual energy. Like, we're just an energy consumer and we basically don't produce any energy. So I think it'd be really cool for the design standards with regards to this redevelopment, if there could be a, a much larger solar capacity on the top of the buildings. I think that would be fantastic. That as well as, uh, charging stations for cars, because the, the cars are coming and, uh, it just seems like it, it would make sense to put them in ahead of time, or at least the access for that for future, not necessarily requiring it for the building, but putting in the information for if somebody wanted to come on later on and add that, the capacity.
You know, it's interesting you said that because I think, as I recall, you worked on us, with us on a zoning court amendment that allowed solar panels to go higher than the building height. Do you remember that one?
I don't know if that went through, but we were talking about it.
Yeah, it did. It went through. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. So we
I think that might have been before I was on, but
So those are really key things that we wanna make sure it happens here. And we wanna be able to carry that forward here. Now, interestingly enough, these companies go through power like crazy because that's why the PUD had to expand that facility. But they are also incredibly interested in not having a lot of power needs. And so they're trying to buy equipment that's very, very energy efficient. Um, one of the other companies that's, was really exciting to find out about is that there's a company called Heinz Bach. And what they do is they design food processing equipment. And basically what the president of the company says, if you've eaten anything from Costco that they made, it was on our machine. Cause they sell all the machines in this for the, for the, you know, anything from pastries to, to rolls, all that stuff. They have all those things. They are massively into saving energy because their machines are, are, you know, high energy users and their customers say, listen, if I can save myself, whatever the number is, and he mentioned it and I can't remember what, if I can save myself ten dollars an hour operating this facility over the next five years or twenty years or thirty years of the life of this equipment, I save myself hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there's a lot of interest out there for doing some very innovative, more efficient, um, uh, energy use provisions.
Oh, great, yeah. Could please continue to talk to people about putting, you know, solar capacity on top of the buildings. It's like a wide open space. No. We got a lot of big trees around here and there's no, uh, you know, there's not gonna be trees in the way of some of this.
Well, there's no big trees now.
I, I mean, in, in some of these areas where the, where the buildings are going. Um, and then with regards to, we, we were talking about traffic. And I don't know if it was addressed in here. I'm trying to recall if I was reading through it, but basically it, it's tough, right? You, the roads, the road capacity will come if we show we're gonna it, it sounds like there's a, it's a kind of a give and take with regards to, uh, Sound Transit, at Wash Dot, all these things, especially the interchanges that we're talking about. What I think would be tough is to create a lot of housing needs in place before any of that infrastructure's in place. Cause it's, it's already a, a very, very crazy area and, uh, not just at rush hour, but for couple hours around the day. And if you're adding a lot more commuters, um, without that already in place, that, I don't know, I, I'd have to
Well, you know
weary of that.
And you have identified the real key fundamental issue we've been trying to figure out, been planning for fifty years now. Is how do you get people to live close to where they work? And right now, we have no residential capacity out there. Uh, well, very little, I shouldn't say no, very little residential capacity. So people don't have the ability to do that. Second thing is that we need to have some residential. Interestingly enough, one of the other items that the, um, business owners identified is they said, we need affordable housing. Because our employees, even though they're paid pretty darn well, really struggle to buy the single-family detached product that they see within, you know, walking distance for these facilities. They need affordable housing. So that was a really interesting takeaway. We, 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 uh, learned from that, well, we've learned from this process, so. Um, uh, yeah, that housing component for people who can actually, you know, leave their front door, hop on a shuttle or a transit and go that couple miles is great. Um, interestingly enough, one of the comments we received on the public access was, uh, somebody said, well, I live three miles away. And it took me an hour and a half to get there. And we gotta do something. And our transportation consultant said, well, two and a half miles, that's, seems like you could do something like walk or run or ride a bike and, but it was a, it was an interesting comment because that person's perception was I got into my single family, my, my single ultimate vehicle and I couldn't get to where I wanted to go. And it's gonna be a tough learning curve for those of us who have been driving our own individual car for, for, you know, sixty some odd years. And basically the idea is, okay, learn to use the bus system. But anyway, so that, that's, it's kind of interesting when you go into these, uh, these, these visioning process and you're really getting input from people, the different perspectives folks have. It's really fun.
Great. And that answered one of my other questions about people who work in these business parks, if they, if they'd wanna live in that, you know, wanna live there. And it sounds like some of them would if, if, if the opportunity was there.
Yeah, and, and that was why the, the interesting comment about this urban form that a lot of their people like versus the more suburban stuff that we've been building around this area. Cause let's say, you know, it's mostly single-family residential within, you know, the, the ten mile radius anyway, not, not fully, but, um, was really kind of interesting. So we do have the ability to build some mid-rise type approaches and have some residential above and it's, it's just a, it's just an interesting synergy how you get those two to, to work together.
Great. Well, those are the questions I have for now. And it's like that, I think that's, let's see if
Well, that was all I had formally.
Okay, great.
Uh, and again, we're, we're really excited about the next phase. Uh, we're gonna talk to the coun- council on March sixth about this and maybe some, maybe talk about some funding as well. And, uh, but the idea is that, um, the next phase is gonna be really fun because it was, it was so interesting to learn all these things about this area that we just didn't know. And it was wonderful to have the, the resources, one, the consultant, but also I devoted time to finding out some of these things. And that, that's one of the things that happens here. And in fact, you know, I've got probably about six hundred hours into this project right now. And I anticipate another eight or nine hundred. So it's just this time spent on these projects that is just comes up and just is a really wonderful, uh, investment, uh, that the city is willing to make on this area.
Great. Well, thanks a lot, Bruce. Do you have any questions?
Just one last question. Sorry. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but as far as the funding for the, you know, new interchange or off-ramp, seems like this region's gonna have some fatigue after ST three going through as far as spending money on infrastructure projects. And at the national level, it's kinda being pushed down to the state. What, what's your take as far as either timeline or possibility that goes in?
You know, that's interesting because we had a really long discussion when we had one of our staff meetings with our, with, with, well, a couple of them. And, and they're on pins and needles as just like everybody else is. They said, well, we don't really know what the national situation is gonna happen, so that can affect what we do here. We have some state activities that are going on with how much money at the Sound Transit three, um, uh, tax, if you would, is, is taken away. And of course, all these things that are happening, well, with the funding. So it's put a little bit of a cloud on that, even though, you know, Wash Dot is fairly, is fairly, um, confident in their ability for the express toll lanes to generate revenues. Now, they're gonna go and we're gonna talk to some, they're gonna look at some different options for them. Maybe they can do some bonding or something like that to get the money earlier. But, um, you know, yeah, the, the, the funding, finding the money to pay for these projects is gonna be a real key piece of the puzzle. And if I were gonna predict, um, I, well, I just don't know how I could pretend, potentially predict because it, even a minor thing could make a big change in how it, how quickly it happens. So it's hard to do that. And it depends on if you were gonna be optimistic today or pessimistic tomorrow, so. But yeah, I, again, I'm, I, I'm really excited about the, the potential for the transportation solutions that we've got.
So I guess that will go ahead and bring the study session to a close. Thanks for that presentation, Bruce.
You betcha.
For all the house, uh, for the, uh, potential code amendments again, Canyon Park review, um, old business today.
Nope, none.
No old business. Uh, and then I guess we have a report from staff here.
We do. Um, on March the sixth, the city council will be doing their docket discussion. Um, if any flying commission members wanted to come and have a participatory role, I think that it could probably be accommodated. Or at least just to see what the process is about.
Okay.
Secondly, I actually have another one that I didn't actually get onto. Um, we need to find another, uh, guinea pig, or I mean, another participant who's willing to do the capital facilities plan for this year. And basically what that is, is you participate with the finance department. And usually it takes one to two days during the month of August. And you basically get into the capital facilities plan for the next, well, I think it's twenty twenty-three at this time. So I'm looking for a volunteer who would be interested. Last time it was Roger Cecil. Um, I think Patrick, you and he flipped a coin on it or something like that, didn't you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I'm just gonna live that up to the councils to who decides they wanna go.
When is that? When do we need to know? Cause I, I think it'd be, it'd be cool too if the other commissioners who aren't here tonight, I don't know if they had a, or we can decide tonight.
They want to know as usual, finance this right now, so.
Okay, well, then maybe we should just
But, but the idea, uh, you know, I think it would be absolutely fine if you identified somebody this evening. And then if it changes, we just change it for them. I think their, their drop deadline was mid-March.
Okay.
So
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, you
This is, uh, yeah, we're not really sure what the next time we, that we're gonna get together, so.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I didn't put in a, a counter there.
No, that's okay. No, I was, I was just wondering, you had a lot of other stuff to include, so. Um, I don't know. So is there anybody here who'd wanna, uh, step up and put their hat in that ring?
Well, I've got a lot of experience. I was the engineering manager for over fifteen years for major capital projects in King County. And, uh, was division director for a while and worked with capital financing, so I understand the language. My wife might not be happy, but sure, I'll volunteer.
You're gonna miss probably two days in August, so just
Okay.
All right.
Is there anybody else who'd like to throw their hat in or?
I nominate Kevin.
Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Kevin serving as the, uh, CFP designate from the commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Kevin, congratulations. Thanks for, well, thank you for, uh, taking on this task. I appreciate it. It does sound like a very interesting.
You notice how quickly they volunteered you?
Well, I, I do have a lot of experience with capital facilities, so I think I could contribute.
It seemed like
That's it, for me.
Quick question, when's our next meeting?
Um, we're gonna try and have one in, um, probably late March. Uh, I've got a couple of things I'm gonna be out of town for. So, um, and I didn't have a chance to look at the projected, and we're trying to work all this stuff out. One of the things that's gonna be kind of interesting is that when we get the docket approved, then then we're gonna have a whole bunch of more things that we can start figuring out how to divvy out and get working on.
Okay.
So I don't have anything specific for as far as a date, but uh we do have a meeting in March we wanted to hold.
Okay. Okay, so um, but you'll just be, just go ahead and email us.
We'll let you know right away.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, 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 you betcha.
Any reports from members on anything related to these type of issues? Um, for motion adjourn, thanks again, Deputy Mayor, for joining us. It's really great to have the council so interested in what we're doing. Um, so thanks for coming and spending your time.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, um, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.